All right, it's six o'clock. We are ready to go.
All right, let's get started on this February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four Lacey Planning Commission meeting. Thank you all for being here. We got some members in the audience tonight. Thank you. Let's start with a roll call.
Just note that everybody's here except for Elliot. It looks like Elliot is not here, so we'll follow up with Elliot. He hasn't been here the last couple of times, so.
Okay, thank you, everybody. I've asked Spencer to read the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Jeff. We, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe, the Squawson Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today who were absorbed or relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as the traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of dispossession, forced removal, and abridged treaty rights that allowed our nation, state, and city to develop as it has today. We recommend that community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of eighteen fifty-four.
Thank you, Spencer. All right, now I would look for a motion on the agenda at the February fourteenth minutes.
I would move to approve the agenda.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
You seconded?
Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
And I would move to approve the minutes of the fourteenth of February.
I just have a comment.
Comment.
Were you?
I was able, I was online.
You were on.
And I voted, yeah.
Good.
Okay. So was that a second?
Yes.
Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? All right. Anybody have a memory?
I do.
Okay.
But I'm a bit rushed, something. I just was, um, read an article in Time Magazine, um, and I thought it was interesting and timely after our discussion last meeting about solar. And, you know, a city of Lacey, you know, trying to, you know, obviously solar we see as a, you know, feasible, um, you know, for, um, global warming, all those kinds of things. But this article was really interesting, and I thought it provided a perspective as we balance the needs of affordable housing and solar. But it was an article talking about, uh, solar companies and the ways in which they finance solar projects and the horrific sized loans that people are putting onto their homes. And I thought it was just an interesting perspective, like if anybody has any interest in reading it. But I think it's something that we should be cautionary about in that there can be a significant cost associated with solar. And often, um, the parties that they're, um, trying to influence to do solar projects may, it may be beyond their, their income level. It may make it to come into a situation where they're not like maybe taking second mortgages on uh, loans or reverse mortgages and creating some issues. And so I thought it was an interesting, um, that it was timely, number one, the article, and then I think the, the balance with affordable housing, that this may not always be the best alternative for all people. Um, and you could make people that are in homes that they own become unaffordable to them because of the situation. And so there's all sorts of talks about the loans, how they finance and such like that. But I thought it was interesting and I just a cautionary tale for us as we go forward on, um, considering things like solar and making sure that we have that proper perspective.
Thank you. There is, especially with a lot of those um, energy, water saving, um, initiatives. There is a huge business in creditoring lending out there. That, you know, everybody needs to be cognizant about. As a government, there isn't a lot we can do about it, but yes, it is something very much. And talk to people, you know, if you hear about somebody that's thinking about doing a fifteen thousand dollar solar project. Uh, you're still driving a fifteen year old car. Sure, this is the best. Yeah, so, good point. Anybody else? Okay, and I realize I just did a major chair faux pas. I skipped right over to agenda item. I'm sorry. Public comment. Are you here to comment tonight? Okay, please introduce yourself and where you live and about three minutes.
Um, I'm not sure if I can get it all done in three minutes. I hope you give me some breaks like that. My name is Joanna O'Halloran. I'm a resident of Camps Highlands. And, um, long before the issue that we will be discussing tonight and then in the community forum and information of a recommendation to city council, I was involved with, um, concerns about neighborhood development and community identity. I was new to Lacey at the time, um, when I bought my home in Camps Highlands. And I recognized that, as Spencer's commented at a recent meeting, community identity of a downtown core or something of that nature in Lacey is smart as a best. Um, when the park was developed out in our area, I was very excited about that because that brings families together. When the area out there, uh, that is now the Meridian Market, uh, and gas station was approved, it was very disappointing to me because I didn't build community by nature. I had faith in the process at that time. Um, I had faith that the language of sixteen thirty-six and sixteen thirty-two would be recognized. I had faith that planning commission and ultimately city council members would be well versed in reading at minimum the hearing. Uh, examiner's recommendation, in particular, his acknowledgement that that decision didn't have to go the way that it meant. And if you're not familiar with that, I'm going to say it out loud through public record. Because when I, uh, try to get it in information in community forums, it's not heard by everybody because I only get to talk to one or two of you in a community forum. It, when I try to submit it online in a, a survey of some nature, sometimes those surveys are condensed and summarized. So the poll vetting of that is not heard. Um, that said, I do listen to these planning commission meetings via Zoom. So I'm not somebody that comes in hot at women issues in my backyard. I've been involved with these kinds of concerns about neighborhoods, whether I lived in Yakima or whether I lived in Olympia or Lys. I'm here tonight to ask you a couple of things. You're, what I understood is you're going to be given a draft, and I presume it's the same one that, uh, members receive via email from the city. Um, and to me, there are a lot of, that's, um, so rudimentary at this point that I hope some of you ask some more challenging questions. Um, I know that you're going to say there's an opportunity at an upcoming community forum. I, those of you who have been there, I think you recognize that there isn't an opportunity for all of us to hear all of our voices. It is go to this, um, poster board or go to that poster board, and if you're lucky, you might catch one or two planning commission members. I want to say to you, please ask a couple of things that are not clear to me on this draft. Please ask questions about vesting and what that means. I've asked Hans a question about this. I got a partial response today about vesting. Um, somebody said at a recent meeting that the gas stations are done deal. It's only a gas station. In my neighborhood, when I'm looking for a community development area that promotes community and, um, affirms the pedestrian quality of what the, the growth plan says, a gas station isn't that. Um, please understand that this current gas station is the only one with the one point five mile distance. There was some conversation about that last time about where did that come from and what does that mean? The only one that currently could have a gas station in the northeast quadrant of neighborhood commercial zones. However, they haven't put a blade in the ground yet. And they have, they are, they're initially given, I believe it's eighteen months, and then there's a possibility of a six month extension. To my knowledge, that should all be part of public record if there's ever been an extension, and there hasn't. One of my questions about vesting is when does something get vested? Do you know when something gets vested? Is it at the time that the application is submitted and deemed complete? Is it at the time the hearing commissioner, if it's a matter similar to what that, uh, conditional use permit was, approves it? Is it at the time that the second or third design change happens? Does that trigger a new six months each time? I'm not clear as I look through the code and I ask you, are you clear about that? So before you come to a community forum or before you make a decision about code language changes, if you don't fully understand what vesting means and how that plays out, please get informed. It's possible that gas station would never be developed yet, and I would applaud that move. I don't have any control over it. At this point, it's a matter of finances and, and other interests of that individual out there. But we're not benefiting, our community park, our, and our neighborhood is not benefiting from the changes that are going to perhaps happen because of this code language. So I just ask you to get familiar with that. You also have something in the code language about residential, um, use of space in, in that area. All for affordable housing and those opportunities. But I ask you, is it possible that across from a park, we could have a residential setup for some, um, a group that needs treatment and rightly so, or needs supervision and rightly so? Is that possible? Or would there be any parameters or is that, are those parameters that are elsewhere in the city code? And if you're confused about what I'm speaking about, it might be, um, folks who have, are out on probation. They have some community, um, supervision. They have some, um, issues regarding behavior that could be problematic a hundred feet away from the park.
So I'm gonna need you to kind of.
I'm just asking you to consider to vet the residential thing a little bit more because I don't, I feel like you're all trying to get through a very ambitious two-year agenda, and you're trying to get through with clickers right now without, you know, full conversation from people, and you're not going to get full conversation in a public forum. That's why I want to take that opportunity, this opportunity. So I'm asking you to look at that and, um, my other question was, what, what, I know that you're trying to get away from identifying specific businesses. One of the questions I asked Hans was, could Green Lady Marijuana or, you know, Janet's Gun Shop come into the, um, commercial element that's going to be adjacent to that mini mart out there or any, anyone? Are there restrictions about that as we get into neighborhood zones as opposed to those legitimate businesses being in a commercial zone?
So what I'm going to ask Ryan, do you set up a meeting with her wherever you need necessary to be in there? Because you're, you're asking legitimate questions, and I appreciate your comments. But you're crossing a lot of boundaries here as far as what the planning commission do, can do versus what building department can do versus the authority of the council. So we just don't have the capacity in this room tonight to address everything that you said. So I'm going to have Ryan set up a meeting with you, the pertinent people that need to be involved.
May I reply to that?
Sure.
What I'm asking you to do as a planning commission is you're going to give a recommendation to city council based on the language that I just spoke about, residential possibilities, vesting possibilities, distance possibilities. Ryan is probably sick of talking to me in community forums and elsewhere as his aunt's. I'm asking you, as the people who give that recommendation, to get informed yourselves. I don't expect you to have that conversation with me tonight. I know you've got other agenda items to get through. I'm trying to put it out there for you to think about and not be dismissive and say they're only hot because it's in their backyard and it was going on for fifteen years. We trusted in the process of local economic demand, citizen acceptance, and design compatibility. The hearing examiner had that same opportunity spelled out in his recommendation. And I'll, I'll question, I'd love to know if any of you read that. Um, I, I really would love to know if any of you read that, but no.
So, again, you're making, you're making very relevant comments. So I ask you with Ryan, the other thing I ask you to do, you have a public hearing next month on the thirteenth. And believe me, all of the public comments that are submitted are considered, every single one. And so if you're not able to be in that hearing, please send me your comments in writing. So they can be part of the record.
I wish I had faith in, um, believing that everybody read everything that's submitted.
So we do. That's our commitment, that's our commitment to you as a citizen. So I believe you do have some faith, but you're here. When you're speaking.
I have faith in new members on the board and a few that I think consistently try to ask questions.
Okay, thank you. One of the next few is, are you here for comment?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, so I thank you. Please, in writing, um, if you can't be at the public hearing, because that is your opportunity to become part of the public record.
And was this part of the public record?
It will be, yes, yes. Okay.
Anything else from other? Okay, so happy to meet with, with Janet. We, we've been talking with Janet all the way along and we'll.
Yeah, since you and Port was hot.
Yeah, so, uh, we'll do that for sure. I just wanted to, uh, let everybody know we don't have anybody on Zoom, so no public comment on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any department report tonight?
Uh, no, nothing.
Okay, we have no public hearing tonight. Um, on the new business, uh, briefing on Lacey municipal code amendments are necessary by legislative requirements.
Yeah, so that's going to be, uh, Jennifer Adams, our housing coordinator. I think, um, a lot of the, the members that have been around a little bit longer, I've met Jennifer on other, uh, briefings related to mobile manufactured housing and the like, and Jennifer's here tonight to present some initial, um, discussion on some legislative requirements that are coming out of the state that are now going to apply to how middle housing is permitted in Lacey. And so, uh, Jennifer's here to give some background information. This is just an informational only briefing. Uh, these, this will be folded into our comprehensive plan update, and eventually you'll see updated code language coming forward um, that will address middle housing in, in Lacey. Just as a reminder, we've already, and I know Jennifer will touch on this, done quite a bit in Lacey related to middle housing. This goes back to, uh, especially our low density zone consolidation now that we do allow duplexes and triplexes on every lot. This is kind of that same concept where we're allowing duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, uh, a broad suite of different, um, you know, cottage houses and other styles as well, um, now that are coming through as a, a state legislative requirement. So I like to say on this that Lacey is about ninety percent of the way there. Uh, so we're not starting like at half court. We're just about ready. We're gonna take the ball and we're gonna dunk it, right? We're, we're just that close. Um, we're, we're not, you know, not at half court, so, um, we're almost there. So Jennifer's going to go through what those requirements are going to look like and, um, and then she'll be able to, to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you so much, Ryan, for the introduction. I just want to comment really quickly that to me, there's new faces here this evening, so um, if you're a new face, I think several of you here, thank you so much. We're happy, very happy to have you here serving on this, this body. I'm fairly new to the city of Lacey myself. I started last May, so I believe it's almost been a year coming up here pretty soon. Uh, my father used to say, there's two paths in life. There's a short one and a long one. This evening for you guys, I took the long one. So, um, I apologize in advance, but if you can make it through this with me, uh, this evening, then, um, I'll bring crumble cookies the next time. The next time we meet. Okay, that's my commitment to you. Um, there's a lot, and with Ryan, uh, with knowing that we had some new members here, even though as Ryan was saying, um, you know, we're probably at that ninety, ninety percent mark with things that we've done already. Um, I wasn't sure everybody's familiarity with, with kind of the buzz term middle housing or, or as we know it here in, you know, these types of settings. Um, so maybe you'll be entertained. If anybody writes down how many times I say middle housing, maybe we'll have to reprise that as well, so. So Ryan's going to help me with slides, and, um, I'm going to try to move through these as quickly as I can, okay? All right, so we covered, we covered who I am, so we'll go to, uh, that guy right there. Perfect. All right, you guys. So before we jump in too far, um, it is important to distinguish between the concept of middle housing and the term affordable housing because these are not synonymous concepts. Though middle housing may assist in offering more housing options across a variety of income levels, it does not inherently constitute affordable housing, which under basic criteria means that no more than thirty percent of monthly income goes to housing costs, including utilities, um, and is assigned an income threshold. Uh, for renters, that would mean a sixty percent of the area median income adjusted for household size. And then for homeowners would mean eighty percent, um, of the AMI. Uh, so what is middle housing, uh, if it isn't exactly affordable housing?
Would you like to wait for questions till the end?
That would be wonderful. Would you be okay with that? Are, are you able to keep track of, of what you want to ask?
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate you asking. Thank you so much. Um, so yeah, so if it's not affordable housing, then, then, then what is it? How are we going to define this? Uh, luckily, the Washington State Department of Commerce has assisted jurisdictions with, um, a definition to use as we proceed uh, through the steps that we need to take. So therefore, we will be considering middle housing to mean buildings that are compatible in scale, form, and character with single family houses and contain two or more attached, stacked, or clustered homes, including duplexes through six plexes, townhomes, stacked flats, courtyard apartments, and even cottage housing. And so middle housing may be referred to as being in the middle in two different ways. Middle housing varieties are considered to offer sizes that fall between large apartment buildings and single family homes. In addition, housing analysts often rely on a general market concept that more housing will naturally lead to easier housing attainability. And so the graphic here indicates some basic characteristics that middle housing aims to achieve wherever possible, uh, such as house scale buildings with multiple units in residential neighborhoods uh, that are appropriate in scale and feel. Uh, they may incorporate open spaces, walkable and connecting opportunities to increase mobility options. Um, and even there again, the big agenda to promote a wide range of housing types to meet varying needs. And so the image here on the left may be a more accurate interpretation of what middle housing could look like in, uh, within the landscape here in, uh, Lacey. So with a combination of, like you can see there, uh, single family homes, duplexes, um, ADUs, guest homes, et cetera. And then the fourplex on the right offers kind of a nice example of a multi-family complex that could be fairly well integrated into a residential, uh, neighborhood. And it's interesting because Washington State used to deliver this style of housing, uh, decades ago. We used to see it quite often, and it still exists, and some of it is, um, has been refurbished. And I think we see a lot of varieties, uh, throughout our travels, uh, throughout the state. And so you may be familiar with concepts that look more like these. Uh, oh, excuse me, sorry, concepts that look like these. Uh, and then these as well. Um, but we could also look more towards a local example. So here in Lacey, this was a nice, uh, example of something that would fit that middle housing definition and scope that we're looking, that we would be looking for. Um, a tripe, triplex nicely integrated into an established, this was also an older Lacey neighborhood. Uh, this was built in twenty thirteen, so, you know, we've got at least a good decade of seeing some of these start to pop up and, and, and sort of, uh, fit that infill, uh, development concept. And so why do we need middle housing? So it's important to establish an understanding of our current housing trends from national, state, and local perspectives. Housing inequity is a national issue. Most of us know that. Um, in twenty twenty, a census statistics indicated the average homeownership rate was nearly thirty percent higher for whites as compared to BIPOC households. And while some progress is certainly being made, this gap still does exist. And in fact, Washington State has begun to estimate yearly how many housing units, uh, would, how many housing units would, uh, need to be purchased within BIPOC communities in order to close the ownership gap? So this, uh, map here, this is reflecting twenty twenty-two in Thurston County. And if you see us there with the little star, we would have needed, uh, in that year, two thousand eight hundred and sixty-six additional homes purchased among the BIPOC households there again in order to close, uh, that gap with white homeownership. And while this is helpful in information, many factors such as area populations, median incomes feed into these gaps, um, uh, as well as demographics. So Washington State has analyzed and projected statewide needs for new housing units, and the verdict is definitely in that Washington State needs one point one million homes by the year two thousand and forty-five. Notice here that more housing is needed at all income brackets. And what does this mean for Lacey? Thurston Regional Planning Council has really made it convenient for us to access housing data that shows us that the population for Lacey is expected to grow by eighteen thousand people by that year, uh, twenty forty-five. And so though growth is anticipated in the city limits, notice here also that the most population increases are projected in the urban growth areas of Lacey. And to meet the state's projection, Lacey is gonna really have to, um, pull up our bootstraps, and we're gonna have to aim to meet our target, uh, of producing twelve thousand one hundred and eighty new homes by twenty forty-five with the majority again in that urban growth area. So in addition to homeownership statistics, it's also important that we talk a little bit about our local housing tenure. So according to a US Census Bureau, and this is, um, reflective of twenty twenty-three, nearly forty-three percent of Lacey residents are renters, um, are close, close there too. Uh, so while that is a little bit less than our neighbors in Olympia, this is still a very large segment of our population. And so while many people choose renting for a variety of lifestyle and, and maybe financial reasons, others simply don't have that choice because homeownership may, uh, certainly just be out of reach. Research shows that today there are more single people, there are less children being born, and there is a growing senior pop, population. In fact, the bar graph up here, it's a little hard to see. I do apologize about that, but the bar graph does highlight some national data here that suggests, uh, steady increases in, uh, this specific to the adult, uh, aging population in the United States. So you can see here that with it, between two, uh, twenty sixteen and twenty twenty, that increased five million. And then those projections are continued to increase, uh, by year twenty thirty nationwide. We should see about seventeen million more seniors, um, in our, in our population. So the question becomes, does Lacey have enough housing types to accommodate these types of demographic shifts as we start to see them locally, uh, here in our community? And again, we look to lo, more local conditions for information in order to identify gaps and needs. This data reflects that nearly thirty-two percent of households in Thurston County were reported as house burdened, which means spending more than thirty percent of that monthly income on housing costs. And then also you can see here in the next column that there was also fourteen percent in Thurston County that were considered severely cost burdened. So that's also very good information for us to have in these conversations. And are these statistics expected to improve? Well, looking at trends, uh, as we can see here in this, uh, Housing Affordability Index, we can gather that Thurston County, um, along with our neighboring counties, is becoming more and more unaffordable. Uh, the gray area on the graph indicates that zone in which housing is deemed unaffordable or is significantly disproportionate to the average incomes in that area. So according to a statewide survey administered by the Department of Commerce, nearly eighty percent of respondents not only expressed a need for more housing options in their communities, but also said that prices are simply too high for both purchase and for renters. Does the middle housing concept align with current and future community vision across agencies? So the Growth Management Act expresses that we must ensure housing for all economic segments of the population, and it further suggests that local governments should promote residential zones that accommodate varied densities and housing types. In addition, the county agrees with this charge and includes in their countywide planning policies suggestions and commitments to increase housing choices for all ranges of lifestyles, incomes, and abilities, and explore ways to reduce housing costs. In addition, a commitment is also made to regularly examine policy in order to continue identifying barriers for middle housing types and also for affordable housing varieties. And then finally, we also always want to look locally. Um and so Lacey looks to his own, it we look to our own guiding uh principles here in Lacey, such as such documents as our twenty twenty-one Housing Action Plan to identify uh the community's express goals to help increase the supply of permanent housing options both at the market rate and also we will want to have some at the affordable rate as well. Increase housing variety and make access to housing easier wherever we have the ability uh to do so. And so why is Lacey addressing middle housing right now? Well, there are a few pieces of new legislation that not only support, but now that mandate new provisions for middle housing and also for the expansion of the ADU program. So House Bill eleven ten, specific to middle housing, and then House Bill thirteen thirty-seven, specific to ADUs. Both of these bills require new regulations that jurisdictions are going to have to implement. And both of these house bills align with the narrative that more housing options at higher densities may present a path towards housing attainability for more people in our communities. The focus will largely address reducing barriers uh to these forms of housing. So with the current and the future housing needs and the current housing landscape in our community, can we envision housing options that offer more variety and accommodate more income levels in residential neighborhoods here in our Lacey community? And that's just food for thought. And uh where are we gonna find place to produce and provide nearly twelve thousand new homes in the next in the next twenty years, because we're getting a little tight on land within the within the city limits? Uh so, well, Lacey may still have some opportunity to produce uh middle housing varieties, including those ADUs, um especially in areas that are low and moderate density residential zones. Um for example, uh here on this map, we just uh were able to highlight in yellow the low-density areas that we have. Uh notice this represents uh the city limit there in the black, and then everything outside of that colored is in our UGA area. Um and then the more of the the pale orange is uh more our moderate density um areas. So we may still find find that there are some opportunities in those zones. And what can middle housing achieve? Well, there are many claims about middle housing that suggest there again that more of it will increase housing access and options, will provide another avenue for homeownership opportunities, should in theory strengthen our local economy, both short and long range, um and encourage building and living up in a smaller footprint. Middle housing types may also be be a really great way to help some of those needs of our senior populations, other retirees, people that desire house sharing, that's very popular these days, young couples, maybe small families, these are all just examples. And Lacey, as Ryan mentioned earlier, really is no stranger to the middle housing concept and has already adopted policies that support the middle housing strategies. So in fact, current policy in Lacey indicates that we already have established framework for middle housing with a few main actions that have been fairly instrumental. So for example, recent increases in our low-density residential zones, where now uh low density goes up to six units per acre. Um the allowance of duplexes and triplexes in in uh zones predominantly for residential um housing, and then also there again with our accessory dwelling unit allowances. Um all of these have increased opportunity uh for landowners, uh revenue resources, and then also housing options for people that are looking uh to be housed. And then as we've established here, our ADU program um can continue to help Lacey achieve more of more of these options. Uh we've kind of paved the wave here uh paved the way with the ADU program um and gained a little bit of recognition, I'd say, with the pre-approval designs. Um and that is an option to help people that might be looking to streamline the permitting process and get things done a little bit more quickly. And so to comply with those house bills we just spoke spoke about, uh eleven ten and thirteen thirty-seven, uh what does Lacey need to do? So uh now we're gonna get to the meat and potatoes here. Uh so one critical cha change uh is the increase in density allowance for middle housing and ADUs. So Lacey is a tier-two study, uh a tier-two city, not a study, excuse me. Um and this is based on population. And so the new authorized density is going to be two unit, two units on all lots that are zoned predominantly for residential use. It's also going to be four units per lot if at least one of those units is reserved at the affordable rate under a deed restriction for fifty years, five zero years. Of equal importance is the introduction and the allowance of unit lot subdivisions. Similar perhaps to a condo model, um the unit lot subdivision will enable landowners, developers, to split each unit where it connects with a solid wall. Uh this provides the ability to independently sell each unit with the land underneath it or just continue to rent those units if you are the owner. This will also there again allow another uh hopefully open up another avenue for homeownership, potentially at these much smaller scales. And then uh moving on to new regulations for ADUs, uh which will will require that all lots zoned for residential use in the urban growth area will now be allowed at least two ADUs per lot. Something very important here is that when a unit lot subdivision is implemented, there is no longer going to be a requirement that the owner of the parent parcel, okay, the main parcel lives anywhere on that property or occupies any of the units. So that's going to be a significant change. Lacey will need to make some local decisions in addition to these new mandates. Uh some decisions will include minimum lot size determinations, objective development regulation decisions such as design requirements, minimum parking standards where applicable. And we also are going to have to decide which six out of those nine from that definition that we saw earlier uh types of middle housing that we as a community, as a city, want to adopt um into our code. So there's going to be uh lots of opportunity for engagement. Um and the end goal for this entire process is going to be for our city to draft um and adopt a citywide middle housing ordinance with a target date of June the thirtieth uh twenty twenty-five. Now, we have heard with some new legislation that we may have an additional six six-month extension on that. We will keep you posted as we hear more on that information. Um we do plan for this to be a phased-out process, so very briefly, and in four simple phases. Um it, you know, uh public engagement, which is just now beginning, and then we'll just go all the way through to the final adoption of our ordinance. Um hopefully, mid to late uh twenty twenty-five with lots of things in between, and we'll be more specific on this as time goes. Um Lacey will conduct a public engagement uh plan that adheres to city and community values and that we feel um is going to be reflective um of an approach that is meaningful, uh that's accountable, inclusive, transparent, that's realistic, and that also um is outcome-oriented. While also staying in alignment with our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion to ensure engagement in the decision-making process and assist the successful implementation of these new uh regulations. I'm almost done, you guys are doing amazing. Two cookies for at least Eddie for next time coming up. Um, okay, so a few considerations, I think these are helpful things as you all go forward with your constituents and into your groups and your communities. A couple of things that I just thought are worthy to highlight in conversation when we are talking about what middle housing is are 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 these couple of things. Um middle housing will not be built on all sites that might meet the zoning requirement, okay? The site must also meet other development requirements and uh be overall feasible for development. So in addition, many Lacey neighborhoods may have uh restrictive HOAs, right? And those traditionally, historically, will always supersede these new policies that come into play. Now, that's not always going to be the case because there's going to be changes there as well. Um so more to come on that. Um also, I think this is a a great point to kind of keep in the back of our mind uh or the for the front of our mind, uh finding the middle housing sweet spot um will be determined by a number of factors, but three that uh really come to the front to assess um our feasibility, attainability, and livability with the focus of all three of these being president present. Boy, we had a president, we had something else tonight that I've chose chosen some some interesting words. So anyway, as measures uh for one benchmark of success, right? So these certainly might not measure success for all projects in all areas, but. Um and then lastly, we want to remember that middle housing does not do a few things. It does not threaten the existence of new construction of single-family dwellings. It does not prohibit the city's ability to regulate design standards. And middle housing alone does not solve the housing challenges that we are all experiencing, but hopes to provide yet one more pathway to get a little closer to what we need to get closer to. That's all I have for you this evening. Uh you are welcome to the slide deck if there's anything there you'd like to have have, I'm happy to share. Um and there are some links to resources at the very end as well, so.
You know, one of the fears of existing neighbors is, oh my god, there's gonna be apartment buildings constructed all around my poor little single-family house here, right? That's not the way development works. And it it doesn't mean if something is adopted, that the character of your neighborhood is gonna change overnight. It just doesn't happen, or even the course of a number of years, because developers recognize that the product that they produce has to be compatible with the surrounding neighbors or it's not going to be desirable. Uh the other thing is, you know, you made the comment about how many houses we need. For years and years, we have been underproducing houses nationwide. For the last six years, we needed to be producing three and a half to five million homes a year. Last year, it was the very first year in that six-year period, we got over a million houses and we only did room for three. So I mean, the the housing production is falling behind the population demands. My last comment is, if anybody really wants to see how compatible a family can be with a single family, I encourage you, go to the South Capitol neighborhood on the west side of Capitol Way, and then the companion neighborhood across the street on the east side of Capitol Way. And if you look really, really close, and you have to look really, really close, you're gonna see the duplexes, the triplexes, fourplexes, and six-plexes mixed in there with all of those single-family homes. And it is incredible how invisible they are when they are incorporated well. So anyway, I know Spencer had a question.
Yeah, so um I I saw some of the slides there that you you were quoting data that was six years old that was re-summarized in the last two years. And um I attended an Association of Washington Businesses meeting last year where they did a town hall and presented information that was current as of the beginning of twenty-three, and it showed projection for growth in this area to be significantly higher than the fifteen thousand that was listed on that slide. And so my concern is that we might be planning for something and we we're already below the bar and we're shooting for that. Um you know, and and do we have a more up-to-date access for for that information, for those statistics?
Yeah.
Because those numbers I was looking at were about thirty thousand, it was almost double.
Okay, I would love to um if if
Michael Kade and EDC should have that.
You're willing to share, so the the data that I used was from our, what we recently were given from um Thurston.
So I can I can explain that, Jennifer.
Sure, yeah, certainly.
So our population projections, which then projects our housing numbers, we are already above our twenty forty-five numbers here in Lacey as we stand today. So we've just, you know, shot like a rocket in the last four or five years past our population projections. And so we're working with TRPC when we do our conference plan update to make sure that we get updated numbers. Um because right now, we're we're not working with with correct numbers. The reason being is that when it comes to population projections, the state of Washington actually develops those. And then they allocate those population projections to the individual counties. And then it's up to us as the individual jurisdictions within those counties to then allocate the populations even further. So we lasted that process three, four, five, six years ago, and we haven't since updated our projections. And so we need to go through that that process to do that. Um there are other ways to get more informations, more up-to-date information. The the stuff that we kind of are 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 given through that regional process is stuff that's already out of date. So we'll we'll bring touch bases to see what Mike might have.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna make sure that we're planning for the reality of the situation that's coming and not already behind the eight ball when we get started with this.
Yeah.
So the data you were given was that thirty thousand population or was?
Yes, that that was on the low end.
Because Jennifer was talking about house houses we needed.
Correct, but but that was lots, or not lots, but units. Units could doesn't equate to a house in that sense. That could home uh potentially any number of people based on what we just saw last.
One additional person doesn't necessarily equate to one additional unit needed.
Correct.
Because households can have two or three people.
Correct, but we just saw that thirty percent of the people are gonna be single in those units. And we also saw these other numbers. And so I I mean, I'm I'm not saying that they just want us to make sure that we're using the right information when we start as a basis point and that like I I know Michael Kade has that information because it it even exceeded my own expectations. And uh it was current as of last year, at the beginning of last year, so it might be worth taking a look at that.
The the thing with the population projections is that they are an adopted standard that we've all agreed to. There are other methods that we'll probably have to use for our call plan that is maybe a little less formal, um but that we can use for for projection purposes. So we're gonna have to kind of sort that out as we go through our comprehensive plan update process because our projections, I mean, like I said, we're sitting here today in twenty twenty-four. And if you go back and look at our population projections as we sit today, we're exceeding our twenty forty-five.
But you made a very valid point.
Right.
I I think we need to use the best available data.
For sure. Um uh one thing that wasn't clear to me is what constitutes a lot in that? Is that a subdivision? Is that the whole parcel? Is there a size requirement for the parcel?
So we're not quite there yet in terms, so tonight was kind of an overview. So we need to, that's getting more into the technical information and vetting out what we as a community need to decide, right? So we may have some decisions ahead of us as to what if we want to do something different with our lot size. Um the state allows middle housing to be on lots less than a thousand square feet if that's what we so choose as a community. Okay, so there is a lot more to come. We don't wanna we don't wanna be behind the eight ball, but we also don't wanna put the the cart before the horse, right? So we'll take this in stride and we will come back with technical information as we have that, okay? Um.
Yep, perfect.
Judy, better question?
Yeah.
Let me talk.
Okay. Yeah, um I see an awful lot of thought and planning and deliberations have gone into defining um the number of units and where they might fit in. Um what I haven't heard, speaking of kind of reality, injecting reality, is what about the corresponding number of cars that would be connected to all of these compressed living spaces? Because you're going to have two working people who are each going to have cars and and maybe a third, depending if it's house sharing, maybe it's three adults. Um I I I've seen this up in Seattle where they've put in these triplexes and six-plexes, and then there's nowhere to park and you're on the street a mile from your house. So how what is how is that being factored into the planning here?
Yeah, so uh kind of the same answer there. So the parking is going to be, those are gonna fall into, you know, development considerations, design review considerations that we again will need to make um in our subsequent meetings. So um probably the next time I come back, I don't, anyway, the next or the next time.
You know, the two new apartments that were just um put up, and reading the details on their approvals, they don't even have full accounting for, there's less parking space so that there's more units built.
Right.
Um parking spaces don't generate revenue for anybody, but they're necessary. Parking spaces don't generate revenue for anybody, but they're necessary and it just it creates an imbalance.
It does. And and these are great conversations that we're gonna have to get deeper into. The literature coming out of the state is they would be just as happy to see no parking at all. That's an option. It's an option for us to choose no parking. So we will have to collectively come to what feels right for our community and what meets those needs. Because most of us probably agree that the landscape here in Lacey is not really well supported by a transit lifestyle, right? And so that's gonna yield something a little bit different. Right now, as it sits, there's a minimum. It's, I might be saying that backwards, six, a six thousand square law, a square foot lot. I think has to allow just one parking, one onsite parking space per unit. And then larger than six foot thousand square foot lots would allow two.
Review, I heard you say that there can be two ADUs and then a primary home on one lot. That could be six adults, six cars. It doesn't add up.
So so I'll I'll make a couple of points here. Number one is. Where this will apply is is mostly going to be in our older neighborhoods. Those neighborhoods that don't have covenants that say single family residential only. So it it's really gonna be in neighborhoods that, you know, have older streets with no sidewalks and those kinds of things. And and so, you know, keep that in mind. There will definitely be a an impact from the transportation perspective. But part of the state basically dictating that the the cities now do this is that they're saying. You must, right? It's not giving you the local control like you might have had once upon a time. It's saying you you're required to do these things. And so, you know, we will, you know, try to do our best with, you know, accommodating parking on sites. But there's gonna be situations where, you know, there will be, there'll be impacts, no doubt about it. And the the state is, you know, essentially precluding us from doing much about it. So, you know, the the state is, and we've seen this in, you know, this legislative session as well, is that the state's saying, well, if. Local jurisdictions aren't going to do what we want them to to get more housing options, we will make you do that. And so that's where, that's the situation we're in right now, is that the the state is becoming more involved in local planning and saying, you must do these things. And so, you know, I guess all that to say is we might not have a choice.
Yeah.
That there might be some impacts associated with some of these.
Odd when our operating principle is quality of life and convenience and yet I might have to pull up. Drop off my groceries in front of my ADU and then park half mile down the road because that's what's open. Or if you're a shift worker, like a healthcare provider or something, and you come home at an odd hour, all the traditional hourly work hours worked or taken. It 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 just doesn't balance with quality of life goal.
But understand too, developers know that they have to make their product desirable. And they know if they don't provide adequate parking or don't have a provision for adequate parking, they know that those units are not going to be.
Well, you know. It is an issue and it's an issue right now in Lacey. If you go, go now and drive down twenty second off of the new roundabout. Those houses are primarily rentals. They are two and three bedroom homes and they are being occupied by up to six people. Who work at the base and work different shifts and and you cannot drive down that that street is not wide enough to drive down. When everybody is parked on both sides of that street. And and yet we fed a roundabout into that, you know, it's a little.
Life is not perfect. I just had a question. Have you heard of generational houses? They are becoming popular in the south and basically it's. A single family home with a one bedroom apartment attached that has onsite laundry, your. Standard living room and kitchen. Is that something that Lacey would be amenable to allow? Because coming from the south, that is definitely something that is very popular down there. And like, I currently moved in with my parents to assist them. That kind of housing would be ideal not only for my family, but for several people I know. Because there's, they have moved in to take care of their parents.
Sure.
It allows them to have their own privacy, their own space, but still be able to be that close to assist.
Yeah, my first inclination is that that sound, it it sounds just like a different term for what we do here, which would be an attached accessory dwelling unit. So that's a way that you could essentially have that same model. I don't know Hans, anything to add to that or. Maybe it's just, you know, I think there's a lot of different names for very similar concepts, kind of across country.
Can I just ask a brief question? I know that we got a lot of sort of kudos for the ADU and the plans and all that. Is that actually floating? I mean, are people doing that? Is it happening?
It it's happening, but very slowly. I I don't, it's not, it's definitely not moving the needle much in terms of providing a lot of more, a lot more housing. I mean, we're, you know, probably averaging a year, what, four to eight maybe in that in that neighborhood. So, you know, the the city has has done a lot in terms of trying to, you know, make those as easy to build as possible. Provide the plans, you know, provide all the the resources that you need to hook you up with a, you know, lender and a contractor and all that that stuff. Everything short of swinging the hammer is what I like to say. And and so, but still, you know, it you have, you you know, that you. They're still expensive, right? They're still per square foot, they're very expensive to build. And so you still have some other realities that that have limitations beyond what the control of the city is.
Which goes back to my point that change the zoning. Don't equate to instant changes in the practice.
Right.
Elliot, and then Devon.
Quite a few questions. Nice job on your your slide. Lots of information very fast. Spencer addressed and Judith addressed a few of my questions, but the, can we go back to the affordable index? Didn't really jive in regards to what Spencer was saying.
Let's see what slide.
And then while you're doing that, the other is the under the radar accessory dwellings, which I have at least four friends I can think of. That have accessory dwelling units. But they dare not go to the building department because they say, look. And I'm actually one of them. When we bought our house, it has an upstairs apartment, which we used to monitor my mother, who was in the downstairs. Section of the house. By all means, they're completely separate units because they have interior stairs that come down to the lower unit. I dare not go to the building department. So we say, hey, I got this accessory, I wanna convert this to an accessory dwelling in it. Because it's old home, it's nineteen seventy nine, two by four walls, et cetera. So is there a way to put that on the the radar for people to. Convert those to to that sort of means, which would of course help your numbers or would it not?
So you're talking about legitimizing ones that maybe weren't issued permits. Yeah, yeah. So, you know, one of the, one of the things we'd have to look at is. You know, and that gets more into the arena of of how it's built versus whether the zoning would allow it. You know, we we allow accessory dwelling units basically in every residential area in Lacey already. So that's more of a, you know, a building code related thing than it is a zoning thing. So.
That's the problem is to to be building code compliant, we have to have two by six walls, now foam insulation. Extra insulation.
So you might be best just not to tell anybody is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Is that the slide you're talking about, Elliot?
Yes. So. So it goes down on the left, that's affordable. So that's the importable index. So things are obviously going downward. Thurston. The really index of course goes down. The the reasons for for all of that is, one, the building cost, which is two hundred dollars a square foot for a home now. Like for instance, I have a lot, empty lot of dark gray across from me. I own outright. Put a home on that, minimum square footage requirement when I buy my HOA is sixteen hundred square feet, that's three hundred twenty thousand dollars to put a house there. And. Factor in the cost of the lot, which is one twenty, that's a four hundred and forty thousand dollar home that I can only sell for about four sixty. So, so the problem that I'm saying is because of the housing. Cost to build is so high because of the new code standards, et cetera.
So it's not just code standards, it's the materials costs, labor costs.
Right.
You're not hiring a framer for the same price you did ten years ago.
I am the framer. But the, you know, the all the new codes that are, it sound wonderful for the, you know, we have a reduced return on investment for our insulation. You know, they keep, like the new codes for the insulation just cause a phenomenal amount of extra cost to the homes. The new codes for the electrical having arc fault, that added thirty five hundred right off the top. Causing sprinkler systems in some areas, thankfully not ours, added a lot of cost. And then, of course, the lot index is is really high in this area. So so we need to fix some of those areas before we can fix another.
Definitely. No, you were already in the queue.
Okay, just a couple of things. So Jennifer, this is high level. And so my questions about what does two units a lot, you're gonna get, we're gonna get to those pieces, the parking pieces, we're gonna get to all of those.
Absolutely.
Okay, so then I'll just table that question. I do wanna speak out to just comment on Tanya. I like though what that is, is it's called something different, but it's the spirit of what we're trying to do. And so maybe, you know, by us attaching different names to it, calling it something other than an ADU. Okay, not before I was on planning commission, ADU would have meant nothing to me. And so maybe, you know, we bring in some of these different kinds of nomenclature for this. And I think it could make something like this be more attractive or comply with the spirit of what we're doing. So I like the the theory or the spirit of that. And we can call it what people might wanna call it, and it might mean something different or it might become more attractive. Versus, oh, I have a rental unit in the, over my garage in the back, you know, I don't know, it might have some different connotations. So I like that. That goes with my vintage, but but I liked, I liked that that sounded kind of a little more. Like, hey, you're just helping your kid out or you're helping your mom out or, you know, kind of thing versus. I'm doing this rental in the back so I can make my mortgage payment. So. I like that.
I noticed too, just to add to that, if anybody's interested, Tacoma's ahead of us. And so they've got a lot of great stuff rolling out right now with what they're doing with middle housing. They have kind of done that, taken that concept that you're speaking of, and they have developed some different categories with different. I can't, I can't think off the top of my head what they are, but you might check it out and just see how they've decided to classify some of their housing concepts.
I I just had a few questions. I read first off about the incentives to support people for building. The ADUs, I was wondering if there was a component of government funding added in. Because I know in my neighborhood next to Midtown, a lot of people came out really excited about ADUs until they heard the price tag. When it costs more to build than you bought your house for, it's a, it's really hard to to build a cottage rental in the back. So I was asking that. And also about if the ADUs have a shared wall, if you're talking about duplexes and triplexes. Are there ADU models now that there are two units going in that would actually share a wall? And would that reduce the construction costs? And then there was a third one, I forgot that one on it, so.
So Ryan, you can jump in if you want to. My my understanding is, this comes along with how we, what how, what we call things. And there's going to be some overlap. So for example, two ADUs. If you decided to attach them, now what do we have? We have a duplex, right? And so there, and there's multiple, multiple examples of overlap like that. So I think it's gonna be a great place, opportunity for us to come in and, you know, and and work with some of these. You know, how do we wanna define some of these things? I know that didn't answer your question.
Yes, I think I think that's right on. So again, very high level at this point, good things to start thinking about. But, you know, the the details, the devil's in the details. We'll have to figure those details out as we go through this process. And and your question about like, you know, government subsidy, it's kind of like the same thing as, I don't know, we're talking about solar panels earlier, you know. You know, government's giving you a tax break for a solar panel. Can the government give you a tax break for doing a, you know, an accessory unit in your backyard? Might not be a bad idea.
I was just gonna say, I think this is an excellent question. That there might be other bodies that, I'd like to keep having that conversation. There might be other bodies within our, you know, region. That could, you know, better speak to that or or, you know, I don't know, I'm thinking regional, regional housing council. So don't lose sight of of that thought because I think that's a really good one.
And I think what you brought up is very much top minded lens that you're right now. I think the goal we're gonna have this year to go much, much further than they were able to. But it was a short session, it's an election year, and at some point you have to face reality. So I think next year, you're gonna see a lot more of these innovative ideas pop up at the legislature and some of them might actually make it through.
Could you just confirm that HOA guidelines supersede these rules? Is that what I heard? Or did I misunderstand that earlier?
That is what you heard. I'm not the expert on HOA, so I invite Ryan to speed, to step into it.
So if you, if you were to come to the city and get a permit for an accessory dwelling unit, even though your HOA says no, we would still issue you the permit. So the city goes by city regulations, not by what, by what your, your HOA says. But you, as a property owner, are bound to go by what your HOA says. So that, at that point.
HB, you know, eleven, ten conflicts with that?
Correct.
How does that make any sense? Doesn't the state supersede the HOA?
It doesn't.
HOA, CCNRs are safe or safe, and it is only possible to do that.
So at that point, if you do co- conflict with your HOA bylaws or your CCNRs, then the issue is between you and your HOA.
Yeah.
We all know how that goes.
We attack your neighbor's value.
Yeah, that's right. We don't wanna push them.
But just, just note, moving forward, if a developer from this point on, after this becomes. You know, part of our adopted code. They will have to allow middle housing.
CCNRs won't allow.
Correct. So any, any new ones moving forward, but we can't be retroactive on any that are in existence as of the passage of the.
Isn't that gonna create pockets of, yep, okay.
Yes.
I think everybody understands, yeah.
You'll know when something moves.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. I appreciate you. I appreciate all of your time very much. I'd like to connect with you because I'd love to to get. In, you know, in touch about some better data.
Absolutely.
So my information's on. Just reach out, email if you, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay, all right. Thank you everyone so much.
Thank you very much. Hans.
Hello.
Dazzle us.
I will see what I can do. In your packet, you should all have drafts of what has rolled out to the community at large. I also have printouts for anybody that wants them. I'll pass those around. So that is the draft code that is currently on the website, has currently been distributed to the community and is out and available for review.
I know, I was glad Eric got cold over there, cuz she made her ankle because he don't.
It was half a degree.
I was thinking you were sending him the right, other direction. Sorry.
My switcher off.
Take my sweater off. Like a tomato.
Maybe it's just gotta be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I bring my own furnace. That wasn't one of the things that I included in the slide, but it did sound like it was a question that's coming up. The public hearing is gonna take a different format than the open houses that we've had around this before. The open houses in the past have been more posters than walking around the room. Whereas the public hearing is gonna be set up where all of you will be at some arrangement in this room at a table. Then there'll be opportunities for individual community members to come up and share perspectives. on this process, on the draft code, really anything related to neighboring commercial districts that feels pertinent to share with, uh, you as planning commission. Uh, following that public hearing, there'll be opportunity to discuss both potentially that night, but then also at follow-up meetings. Uh, so no decisions need to be made tonight at that meeting or immediately thereafter, so there is still plenty of opportunity to kind of take in the feedback that you receive and digest it, think about how it matches up with where we're at, uh, what we've been working on, and then working, looking at ways to incorporate that within to the draft that's currently in front of you today. So that's just a little bit of information on kind of the format of the next couple times that we're gonna be getting together and talking about neighbor commercial districts. That said, jumping back into my slides, uh, in preparation for the public hearing, uh, we've done some noticing, uh, really just trying to get the word out, and that's been in a couple different formats, we've updated the, uh, project website, so this draft code is out there. Information about the public hearing and how to attend either in person or virtually is also out there. Uh, opportunity to reach out to the project team, provide comments in advance of the public hearing is also available. So there's many different avenues there, specifically on our website. Uh, through this process, we've also collected emails from anybody who says that, yes, this is a, something I want to be kept, uh, up to speed on as you move through the process, so we've developed that email list and informed already anybody who signed up as part of that about this public hearing, the draft code, and the opportunity to participate. Um, we've also used all of our different social media platforms to get the word out, uh, we'll do that on a rolling basis leading up to that, so we've already done one cycle of that, but we'll continue to do that as we get closer to the actual meeting itself. And then we also did a mailer, uh, to, uh, everybody actually within 600 feet. As part of these processes, if not that you're required to, but typically it's a 300-foot radius, um, we decided that we weren't getting enough people with that 300-foot radius around each one of these locations, so I bumped it up to 600 just to really make sure that we were reaching everybody, some of these properties are kind of weirdly shaped or longer, so part of that was making sure that we really kind of let everybody know that's immediately adjacent to these sites, that this is taking place. Uh, in total, that was about 1,000 residents and businesses, uh, where direct mailers will be going out, or actually, I think they already have gone out, um, to let them know about this, uh, get them up to speed, tell them that there's an opportunity to share feedback, um, and tell them about the public hearing. So, that's in preparation for that, and I'm using my keyboard again, which is not connected to that screen.
Before Hans moves into the code, are there any questions on the public hearing? And also, for some of you, it'll be your first public hearing, and we just want to make sure that you can kind of understand the format, it's a little, it's, it's, I would say more formal than what these meetings are, right, you're, you know, taking public comment, so, you know, the role of planning commission is to sit and listen, and then at the, you're, you're not responding to comment, you're, you're taking notes, those kinds of things, and then at the end, after the close of the public hearing, that's when the planning commission then, you know, goes into, you know, dialogue about, you know, what code changes to be made. It doesn't necessarily have to happen right after the public hearing, what we can do is we can take all that information, summarize it for you, and then bring it back at your subsequent meeting, where then you can start analyzing and providing a recommendation, start developing a recommendation, so, you know, develop, depending on the planning commission's tenor, my, my recommendation probably is, because I, I would expect that we'll get a significant amount of testimony, is that we just hold the public hearing that night, um, and that's it, we don't make any, um, you know, analysis of the, the code, those kinds of things. What we can do as staff is go back, summarize all of the testimony that you've received, and start actually getting into some of the issues and concerns, and providing some additional information, and then, you know, at that next meeting, we, we could have a follow-up where we start that deliberation process.
I, I would highly recommend that process, because you know, go to a public hearing, especially when it's expected to be as active as this one, you're gonna remember what the last three people said, you may not remember what the first person said, exactly. And so, and what they said may be similar, but you need to mesh them to get, yes, please, let, let's do that process.
And just for clarity, so for those that haven't been, it was a big learning for me in some of the ones that were active, I think that's a good word, when there's lots of testimony, um, you know, short of it's a specific question, we're, we're not having a, you know, a question and answer session.
That's right.
We're, we're taking in input, we're gonna internalize that, we're gonna talk about that. I do remember, um, the last one that was of significance, I thought city staff had kind of like brought everything together, brought in like the emails, and then kind of like, hey, we had 15 people that mentioned this situation or that, I, I don't know if that will be relevant, but I remember that being really helpful with one, so it's really, we're just, we're taking in the information, we're absorbing the information, we're considering it, and we're considering all of the testimony, but it's not a Q and A sort of situation, and, and it's hard to do that, because, you know, you have questions being posed to you, but um, that's not the forum for that, and so it just was, it was big learning for me, um, so those of you that have done this a lot, um, it was like, wow, okay, this is not what I expected it to be, and, and so, I just.
And there isn't anything to prevent, once, once we get the public comments, and we get them compiled and summarized, and we have our, you know, discussions about what we've heard and how that messes with or doesn't mesh with what's on paper, there is nothing to stop us from asking for another public hearing, at the point where we revise what we've got.
So, both state law or, or in our code both require that we hold at least one public hearing, but you could, you know, in theory, have multiple.
Any other questions on the format at the next couple times we're gonna be getting together? From here on out, and I'm using my keyboard again. Um, I summarized three different, uh, main topics that we talked about at our last meeting, uh, there was some kind of polling that we did, we did some discussions, so I kind of summarized those, and then also gave an example of what that translated to in the actual draft code. Uh, so for gas stations, for example, uh, we asked the planning commission, uh, if it should be a permitted use, if it should be a permitted use with limits, or if it should just be uh, not permitted within these neighbor commercial districts. Uh, the majority of feedback that we heard back was that it should be a permitted use, but with limits. And then, when we move forward in that discussion, some of the specifics were not within 1.5 miles of another station, and that's any station, so it's not necessarily within another neighbor commercial district, it just can't be within 1.5 miles of another gas station, wherever, whatever district it might be located in. Um, and then we also asked about accessory use to a grocery store, we actually had a even split on that one, uh, on which way we should go, whether or not we should allow that. So for the draft code, we did include it so that we can get feedback on that. Uh, if we hadn't included it, then there wouldn't really be an opportunity to provide feedback to that one. Once that feedback comes in, then we can better respond to that and adjust from there, depending on what makes sense. Um, and then we also asked about the number of pumps and how many vehicles, uh, the gas station uh, has the potential to serve if we wanted to provide a number associated with that. And the consensus there was four pumps serving a total of eight vehicles, uh, so that's kind of what the guidance was from the last meeting, and then the draft code is over on the right, um, I can read it. Gasoline fueling stations as an accessory use to a full-service grocery store, so that's what we talked about there, including it initially to see what the feedback is. Uh, or not less than 1.5 linear miles from another station, uh, so that's direct miles, it's not as the car drives for, because that actually does change things, we looked at that a little bit. Uh, and then also, stations are limited to a maximum of four fueling station pumps, pump islands, which translates to eight vehicles that could be potentially served at those islands at any one time. Uh, and then we also had some language about stacking lanes, uh, which actually relates to gas stations, but also drive-throughs as well, but is relevant to where the location of that potential station could be in relation to the rest of the district, what's located on it. Uh, so right now, that's the draft code language, uh, specific to gas stations, uh, that's in front of you, that's going out in the packet, that's part of the public hearing, uh, that we will likely hear comment about, but just so everybody's familiar with what's in the draft, uh, as it's currently written now. Um, and I'm, I gotta just move this away. Uh, let me try this one more time, all right, uh, one of the other areas that we discussed was, uh, ground floor residential uses. Uh, the majority of feedback here was that it should be a permitted use, but again, with some limits. Uh, these are commercial districts first, uh, so while allowing residential on the ground floor, we're going to make some caveats as far as when and where that can happen. So that commercial space requirement was something we talked about a little bit. And then also, uh, one of the things we touched on was the affordability requirement, so since it's a new, newly allowed potential use in these districts, we have the opportunity to maybe set some additional parameters about when and where and how they can take place. Uh, so on the draft code language side, uh, we have permitted in districts with a minimum of 15,000 square feet of commercial space, so these are commercial first, so once they hit that threshold, uh, residential units on the ground floor are permitted, is kind of how the code is written now. I should say is how the code is written now, and then ground floor residential units required, are required to meet affordability or affordable housing definitions as defined, uh, within RCO. I'm not gonna read the part, but really, that's actually pulled from what Jennifer was talking about, um, that's, uh, newly, the definition for that is newly updated for 2023. Uh, it's actually pulled from House Bill, uh, 1110, and it actually gets into the definition of affordability, and what does that look like? Uh, it touches on 30% uh, of your income, household income, but it also takes it a step further and, uh, discusses how long um, that affordability needs to be maintained for, I believe Jennifer touched on that, that was a 50-year minimum as part of that building. Uh, and then also, it actually breaks out further as far as what affordability looks like, both for renters and for potential, uh, owners of these sites. Um, so, that's how that language is there, the bottom part is not included, it, what's in italics, um, but that's what that is in reference to, just so you actually know the details of what's behind that reference.
And so that signifies all of this middle housing.
That's how all of middle housing is gonna be.
Just for clarification, you're saying AMI, area median income, that's not area median family income, correct? Or just single individual?
So in, in this instance, it would be based on households.
Okay, so it is family income then, or, okay, got it, yeah, yep, thank you.
Well, what is, uh, maintain as affordable for at least 50 years?
Yeah, so that means that there needs to be some kind of, uh, a covenant, uh, on the actual property itself, so the, the, yeah, the, what is the word for this? The, your ownership document, I'm blanking on what that was. There it is. Uh, yeah, so on the deed, uh, that, there's a covenant that says that this property needs to be maintained as affordable, consistent with these definitions for 50 years, uh, in order to be allowed to construct ground floor residential.
Translated, what, what is that? Me, does, does it mean that they, they can only sell it to a certain index person?
Mm-hmm, yep, so if it were to.
And it's only approved by the covenant, by covenant, or?
Yeah, so whether it was being listed as a rental, uh, there's a set price that's attached to that, and that's based on area median income. And then if it was being sold, it would be, have to be sold at that 80% AMI. So that's, it's controlled pricing for that first 50-year period, after which that would go away based on the RCW that was recently just passed. Uh, but that's the, that's the state level definition of what affordable housing means.
We, we have a program here at the city that we would require them to do regular reporting, to make sure that they're not subleasing to somebody that is maybe, you know, they're, somebody that's got it for a really low rate is subleasing it to somebody at a market rate, you know, those kinds of things. Every time the property changed hands, the city would have to review it to make sure that, you know, the right individuals are purchasing the property, so we, we do have a program now through Jennifer that, that regulates that, make sure that the, all those things are done above board.
Old boy. Um, and then the last one that I did want to throw in here was the, uh, commercial windows, uh, we did have a discussion about a bit. Uh, so the discussion really revolved around window treatments to reduce glare and heat, uh, should be possible. At the same time, we need, we'll still need to maintain that visibility to and from the streets, really create that kind of human-oriented, pedestrian-oriented environment. Um, so draft language, again, uh, much of this is actually the same as the early iterations of this, uh, but the area that I highlighted here is really kind of what we tweaked a little bit to accommodate the, uh, the tinting scenario. And while we can define this in the code in practice, if we can't visually see that there's tinting going on there, I don't know that that's really gonna rise up to something that we would be tracking, so unless it's like a very dark uh, window that's very obvious that you can't see through it, that's not really typically gonna trigger review anyways. But we do add some language, uh, so highly tinted, there's kind of the word choice there, and then we also went on uh, below 70% visible light transmission, which I believe is what we're talking about. I believe stating highly tinted and also defining it is kind of the same, saying the same thing twice, um.
I think it is relevant that you have that threshold there, um, because that is visually indistinct between a normal window. Normal window's about 89 to 83%, depending on the manufacturer, so it's not a substantial change, you go below that, it becomes noticeable to, to laypeople.
Plus, highly is a subjective word, right?
Right, right, so this is a way to add some additional clarity on what that means in practice. Um, so, that was the other one I wanted to hit on that we kind of had some discussions about at our last meeting and show, kind of from the discussion what that translated to in the draft. I'm doing it again. Um, so yeah, and then this last one really is just, uh, again, a summary of where we're at today, and moving forward, just high level, we talked about kind of the next few meetings, but then, whenever we get to that, so, following the public hearing, uh, there will be additional review, uh, by you as the planning commissioners. Eventually, we will get to a recommendation of a draft that then will be advanced on to the council, uh, and then they will also review that, and then have the potential to take action on it based on that, so, um, yeah. I did pass out the draft code, uh, you also all have it, uh, digitally available as part of the packet today. Happy to discuss anything that's top of mind that you want to review, uh, there will be additional opportunities to discuss it later as well, but if there's anything else uh, that you want to talk about as part of tonight's meeting, uh, yeah, it's somewhere time, so.
Stop sharing your screen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Discussion.
Hans, I really appreciate it, cuz I think we've got it teed up to the point now, where we can listen to what Clive has to say, and then go in and make any revisions that we feel we need to based on comment. So I just really appreciate your work, and, and you've gotten us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody have any questions for Hans? Well, thank you, very much.
Thank you.
All right, any additional items from anybody? Well, then we got adjourned a little early, it's gonna make up for our next meeting. Uh, so our next meeting is the 13th, and it'll be a public hearing, so thank you, everybody. Try to stay dry.